This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, call to order the meeting in Southampton Select Board for April 8th at 6 o'clock. We can stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
May I be the chair?
Yes, sir.
May we open our...
You may open your meeting. All right, so this is a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Finance Committee tonight, and Select Board has its quorum. Dan isn't with us tonight, and Cindy is actually off the board. So we'll be a four-person board for a little bit until we have a replacement, hopefully after the election. So we have mostly budget-related things tonight and more related things for the town meeting, but I wonder if there's some citizens speak, since I see Richard over here. Would you like to address the body here, Richard?
Sure.
Well, sure, you can come on up, so you can...
Oh, you're gonna stand? Yes, sir.
It's that time of year again. My name is Richard Leclair. I live at 55 Strong Road, Southampton. I'm past commander of American Legion, Post 168. This is the time of year again we ask the Select Board for permission for the Memorial Day Parade, which is on the 26th. It is up to you people, six, eight or days.
I don't know that would have ever been refused, has it? It's my knowledge. I don't think so, it's great.
I'll make a motion for the May 26, 2025 Memorial Day Parade and to allow such streets as necessary to be closed during the parade. So...
Sounds good, all right. Any further discussion? No? All right.
Report from the safety department.
Yes.
Good, good.
Okay, good. All right, yes, something else you'd like to say?
I just wanted to say, everybody is invited, all departments, everybody. This is a town thing, so we need all the help we can get and all the participation we need.
Great, all right, so we have a motion on the table and a second. We'll have a vote, please, all those in favor.
Aye, aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
So great, yes, we look forward to the parade again this year.
It's gonna be, I don't know if it's gonna be any more for me after this.
Well...
My disability is getting worse as it goes.
Oh, we'll get you a fancy ride, that's all. Thank you.
You can hop to my car.
Yeah, there you go.
The chief will be, when you're going to march and he says, "You got the front seat or the backseat?"
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Yo, thank you for coming, thank you for asking, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
He didn't give me that choice.
Yes, only the backseat for some people here, yeah, okay. All right, so, budget hearing, so I think pretty much I'm gonna turn this over to Scott and tell you, have you walk us through whatever all the various papers are here. I think we've seen most of them before, but in case there's anything new and exciting, and maybe the Select Board has seen a couple of these and Finance Committee may not have, because we went through a couple of these probably on Thursday last meeting. Now, if you, I know Christina wanted to be here for this, so if you didn't do the ballot question first, she's gonna come a little bit later, I think, so...
So on the revenue side, there hasn't been any updates. I checked again to make sure, see if any cherry sheets have come in, and I talked to Representative P., so it's gonna be a few more weeks before we get anything from the state, either increasing or decreasing the governor's recommended budget. We do pretty much have a hard deadline for our budget of April 15th because of the potential ballot override. We could probably wait another extra week if we didn't have that, but then I still don't think the state will be done by that point anyways. But all the other revenues are pretty solid at this point, and there haven't been any changes, so I know about a week and a half, GoGen, our treasurer, looked at some of the revenue for meals tax and cannabis, and that was just maybe adjusted by $1,000, so, but that's still trending pretty strongly.
Do you wanna put those up, maybe just to...
Oh, yeah.
Maybe just to refresh people's minds.
Everything's been double-checked at this point, so I don't think increasing anywhere would be probably the best in, I mean, maybe even reducing some for our interests or our investment earnings, but that's gonna be a little bit of a roller coaster next couple months. Other than that, we are waiting for the school-related, we are waiting for the tuition enrollment and cost for the vocational school, so I reached out to Crystal, and I'm still waiting to hear back, she's from Smith Vocational for Finance. Once we have those numbers, it'll be the last bit of our school budget. So for the school budget, you might have heard that there is going to potentially be a request for, well, there is a request for an override. The budget that I presented so far accounts for 4.04% interest for Norris Elementary School. Our transportation costs have been settled at 3.5%, so I put that in there. At this point, the school committee's looking for about a 16% to 18% increase. I haven't had any updates from Don, their business manager, about any other found money or changes so far, so it does look like they're gonna be moving forward with a $897,000 deficit going into the next fiscal year, and that's for level services. Most of it has to do with special education. The other part of that is staff increases, and then staffing personnel cost, and then another part of that is really central office costs that they have to pay to central office, so it's about $800,000 to $900,000 in total.
So Scott, is that, that's different from this page here, this 729?
Oh, no, that's, that should be the right one.
Scott, when this is, say this is approved, is it approved as the new baseline moving forward, or is it a one-time?
It will be, it will go against the tax limit, so forever, until there's an override technically, it'll be part of the taxes moving forward.
So you can't undo it the next year?
I mean, you could, but...
How you would undo it is not raise the full two and a half, right, maybe only raise it 1%, and then over a period of time. But, given all the other deferred maintenance in the town, I don't think that's probably how...
Likely gonna happen, but, yeah.
Yeah, so... Unlike, I'm sorry, unlike the public building, which is a debt exclusion, right, it's just as long as that purpose is there, then it goes... Unless it's the, talking about the turnpike, those never went away.
So the override is specifically earmarked for, in year one, for the purpose stated on the ballot question, and then it goes into the general fund?
Then it becomes part of the total, that becomes the new floor for next year, then you have the two and a half, and the new growth, and adjust for the overlay.
My impression, from your opinion, it's four or five years of increases in one year. It's such a large increase.
For the...
For the school, for the $897,000.
Do you wanna go over the breakdown of those numbers?
I kinda went through them, I think I understand why, and I think the answer about why is that you can't do anything to, you can't do anything about it, right? I mean, because you're involved with school, and especially the cost and...
Well, that's, so the two driving factors are the contractual obligations, right, that's 330-something.
On that second page.
Does that increase or something?
Yeah, and then, so part of that is the, is the contractuals across the board, plus the addition of a BCBA, which has a offset, a greater offset in special ed cost. Behavior, I'm gonna get the acronym wrong, but it has to do with special education, like behavioral specialists. So currently, in the existing budget we have, this is the year '25, of that $343,000, that's in the '25 budget, $150,000 of that is being spent to have an outside firm provide the services of one BCBA. We would hire, the superintendent has said, "That's stopping, we're hiring a BCBA." The BCBA by union contract, I think, is $82,000. Add in the other cost associated with that, you end up having a net savings of $27,000. In addition, for 2026, our out-of-district, which the details find their god in life, out-of-district rate change increased by 100 and something. Special ed costs.
Yeah.
$179,000, which, again, now we're under an IEP, which is a federal order that we have to do that, so there's 500,000 of it. Central office, 119, $92,000 of that is our, is Norris' cost from year two of the forensic audit. So in theory, after two years, they should be done with the forensic audit, and that $92,000 will go away. So all, all other things being equal, that would be $92,000, that would fall back to the general. And then, while not reflected on that second page, but on the first page, last year, for non-town revenue, that went to the school, $931,000, and because of cuts in grants and that, we're down to 763. So you take those four items you have together, you're pretty close to the 800.
Just remember the ones on the second page that you just went through again, that's right, the spend, what's the...
763.
This one right here?
Yeah. Out-of-district placement?
Yeah.
Can I ask what neurodiversity is?
Yeah, so that's a program that we started to, prevent might be the wrong word, to provide services within the school to eliminate out-of-district placement, and there are currently nine children participating in that. Not that all nine would go out-of-district right away, or it could, it'd be a year process anyways to get there, but if the average cost of an out-of-district placement is 121,000 plus transportation, multiply that by nine, if we didn't have the program, over time, we'd get there.
So that was part of what we had agreed to fund a little bit under ARPA funds during the, during the beginning, well, right after COVID, beginning of, beginning of ARPA, really, to try and help out because of all the...
And there is capacity in that program to take on additional students, and the thought is, is that there are children in Williamsburg School District right now that could come to Norris, who is just going out-of-district. So it would be something less than the 121,000 they're paying now, but something more than the $5,000 for school choice, and then it would keep them in the system.
So that is kind of an ARPA-funded program that we're not getting rid of?
ARPA, the ARPA funded, fired in...
June last year.
How much was it being covered previously? Was it...
100%.
100% prior, the fiscal '25 budget had six months' worth of it in there, right?
Correct, exactly, yeah. Yeah, the whole, the whole neurodiversity program and special ed, part of that, because there was a special ed teacher, some paraprofessionals, and this BCBA was all funded out of ARPA, and that was a special request, we did it for two years, I think, out of ARPA.
So the BCBA is the teacher, is the second teacher?
Is the teacher, right, yeah, right, that was a teacher, then a contract, and then back to teacher.
Right, the teacher left three months afterwards.
Right.
And then, yeah.
So right now, what you're saying, the out-of-district placement for those, there are nine kids right now?
That are being serviced within the budget, within Norris, so they're not out-of-district question.
And so the 179 will be more kids potentially coming in?
No, that 179 represents a known child going out in addition, so at 439, I believe we have four children out-of-district right now, that are already out-of-district.
So you're spending over $300,000 on those nine kids in the neurodiversity program?
Correct.
Though it had been funded by the program.
Through ARPA, yeah.
Yeah, but it hasn't been lost.
Right, and the intent was to be able to, to be able to establish the program and offer those services so that we could bring in kids and get, get that...
And save the cost of...
Introducing out-of-district placement.
Correct, yeah.
Because you said, John, in the 493, that's four students?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's at least 100,000 students, so... How much of the out-of-district placement has matching grants or state funding? Is it dollar for dollar? I don't think so.
No, so it's not, but that gets you into the circuit breaker, and you'll see our circuit breaker revenues on the first page, they vary, and circuit breaker money is trails. So for fiscal year '25, we have to submit the extraordinary one-time cost related, that we can justify is related to, to special education, because some of that's inside the system, emerging out-of-district, and then that's reimbursable through the, through the federal government, or has been. They then audit, Medicare audits it, and then fine tunes our award. So we believe for '25, pre-audit, our notification is that we're, we're going to get $155,311. There's usually some sort of adjustment, so we only place 150 of that money into the budget. And then, when we get done with this year, we'll do the same thing, whatever comes in, gets rounded down and then applied to the budget.
That makes sense, thanks, John.
And this is the one that's a year behind, is it?
That trails.
Yeah.
Unlike rural aid, we find out in November what rural aid is, and it has to be applied within that year.
Yeah, I've been involved with schools for a long time, but special education's like 36, 37% of the entire budget. It's like running away.
And then, as Scott rightfully points out, the only other, the only real cost in here is the salaries.
Yeah.
Right, because benefits are in the treasurer's office, and you have payroll taxes and all that's over on the town side.
That's also going up, double digits up. The insurances are going up.
Yeah, insurances have gone up this year, so, yeah, but all of that cost that was really on the town side, it's not even factored in Norris' budget right now.
Until you do the net school spending calculation.
And the net school, I looked at the net school spending calculation, and it looks to me like we've been more than generous, we're over 100% for the last two years that I saw, over about 110%, 120%, we're covering our net school spending from what we have at the chart.
Well, we have to be, otherwise we'd be getting gushed, but that's one of the unknown questions on transparency in the public, the point that other individuals face with this.
Okay, yeah, well, we can certainly make those figures available, because they're all online, very easily with DLs.
So I believe this isn't an ignorant question, but it's more broadly about the approach that the school board took, right? It seems like we have this all-in, you know, budget request, but is there some, you know, sense in going, having the school board consider, like, a reduced option, a small?
And here's the reason why we can't, we're under contractual obligation, the worst budget we can go through is level services. Otherwise, we'd be violating collective bargaining agreements.
And even like the new ARPA positions, that's all under the collective bargaining, they're all in the union?
Because they're there in this budget year.
Okay. Chair, can you say it again, the level funded piece, so everything we spent?
This is a level service, so there's no ask in there with that one exception that I talked about converting the contract over. So the original budget that came through had an extra STEM teacher, so all the other schools in the district are having a STEM program, and they're gonna be unified on that, the Norris children will not have that. So it'll, if we can't correct that within a year or two, it's gonna create a shortfall, because Norris children, once they get to Hampshire Regional, make up 56% of that population.
So you can't put up a budget that cuts two teachers, for example?
No, no, the school committee can't.
But in this case, we'll have two budgets, it'll be the ask, and then the fallback. And the fallback, then, then you can cut, is that how it works?
Right, but it's not the school committee cutting, it's the town's people.
Got the town meeting.
And they're not, while they're subject to collective bargaining agreement, they would, lawsuit would come against us, based on what the voters did, if there was one.
There can be a suit if the voters don't vote again?
I tend to believe that unions are allowed to take any action based on choose me, whether it was...
Doesn't mean it's not frivolous.
Right.
And we've got a difference between level service and level funded, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's a challenge, too.
Yeah, level service can be at 10% increase if everyone's getting a raise, and...
Correct, all the contractual obligations.
All contractual obligations, yeah.
And this year we're going into is a contract negotiation year for everybody over there.
Have for two, 26?
Science, we're just taking it down.
That's Hampshire Regional, not Norris.
Two different unions.
Different unions, I mean, they're all in TA, but two different ones. So the school committee did look at the town's suggestion of a 4.05, and then we gave a rough draft of what that would look like, and then they went back and fine-tuned the numbers, and came up with the 6.5 certified positions, and then 3.5 non-certified. And some of that is gonna be folks that maybe are working a full .1, that may go down to a .8, they're a .7.
Just seems like we, Scott and his team did so much work on nickel and diming the town budget, and this is blown out of the water with the school stuff. I understand the logic, but I guess my other concern, too, is we have some special projects that we're trying to approve for, and you put those all together, it doesn't...
Even on the municipal side, we're investing in person, more than previously. That's, that's a load that we carry.
Yeah.
But we've chosen to.
But I think with the 4.7 budget that we've put forward, what you were just saying, that equals 10...
FTEs.
10 FTEs, we're, we're close to it.
10 FTEs, yeah, and then with the equivalent of 10...
The equivalent, yeah.
One of the, one of the specials would be completely eliminated, and the specials are art, music, gym, library, so one of those would go, and then the six and a half are certified ones, I mean, that's gonna be classrooms, and that, that's where we get into, because now the other trigger on the contracts is we cannot deliberately schedule a classroom to have more than 25 students, and if we do, it has to be temporary, and it can't exceed 30. So we would go to, some of these classrooms would go to 28. So under the agreement, again, it's because, it's not what the committee did, it's what the townspeople did. We could get, we could, we would be permitted to do it for one year, but if in the next budget cycle it didn't get corrected, it'd be a violation of the collective bargaining. But that also wipes out all supplies, like, all classroom supplies would be gone, right now, I think it's, each classroom gets $250 in teacher supplies, that's all wiped out, all the, the $27,000 for curriculum books and paper would all be wiped out.
That's a free of this budget, or is it...
No, 4.05.
And we had looked at what it would mean to do any further cuts on the town side, and that was coming up even, even equally worse, right? So we figured every $80,000 was a person, is that right?
Every percentage increase over 4% is $80,000, you gotta cut.
Okay, percentage increase, so we had looked at a couple of those, and there just isn't that much to be able to cut on the town side in terms of the level of departments and the number of staff in every department, there's, there's very few on the town hall side of things, so...
Is there any political pushback on special ed that you see anywhere?
Coming out of Norris?
Coming out of the state? Massachusetts, or, it just seems like...
The only pushback...
The more that special ed goes up, the less is available for general education.
Yeah, and again, you know, we're having this big spike, so I would expect the circuit breaker to increase proportionally next year, but there again, we get into trends. So for the past couple of years, our out-of-district cost, and special ed cost has been dropping, so we've been the benefit of that, not, not having that, and the funds have been, you know, moved or reallocated, whatever the cost may be, but now it's on the other side of the pendulum, so now we gotta find the money for it to come in.
It seems like it almost should be like an average actuarial placement, where, you know, even if you, in one year, you place three, you reserve for five, and you set that aside, because otherwise that budget surplus gets allocated to positions that then have to be continued for it to move, yeah. It just seems like bad planning on the school administration side, considering that, just, you know, not flattening the fluctuations.
The only political pushback I see is hasn't really stabilized, it was a big conference at UMass, where it was, I mean, our cost of doing business out here versus in Boston are much different, or even in Springfield. And so to address that, this is, assuming we get our award for rural aid, it's only gonna be the third year since rural aid was created, that something like that. And rural aid is calculated on the distance, the average distance from the school of each child, so until we started developing out on the fringes of Southampton, we never qualified for that, so a little growth was good.
Yeah, because we've got, what, 117,000, 118,000 in '25?
Yeah.
And so what you've got in the preliminary, that's just, just a placeholder at this point in time, we don't know what that number is yet on rural aid, the 85,000 will say?
Correct, so that 85 is actually an average of 117,000 a year prior to that, as a placeholder.
But that could be, that could go up, right?
Yep, or, or down, could be either way. If it goes down, it would hit the reserves.
So as, you know, as we're pulling this all together, there's still, there's still play in, in terms of not knowing where, where budgets are gonna land, in terms of grant money, in terms of state aid, all that kind of stuff is not totally nailed down yet.
Does nothing though.
So, no, I know.
Okay.
Is there a way, do we have the ability to change the article so that it is just a one-year thing and not a, doesn't build up to base? Because if, expenses go up and down, but they don't really, they go mostly up, but they could go down.
You can do it one time, where operational cost is not recommended, but...
You'd have to, we'd be right back to the same place, but the increase could be 8% that they need, because something good is happening, I don't know, but it's already going to happen, but... If you think about potential timing, there would be the debt exclusions for some of the, you know, so I think there'd be even less aptitude, and you'd be looking at potential even more drastic cuts if the override doesn't pass next year, because you're gonna have to go back for another one. You're gonna have to keep going back.
Yeah.
And right now, the schedule is tentatively, whether, whether it's just the override or the 3.2 goes on this ballot, if the 3.2 doesn't go, that, along with the cumulative cost at that point known, the public safety would be on the next ballot, and then the next ballot after that, the town wants to put up an equipment override, or debt, or whatever, a capital, whatever we're gonna call it, bring that up, and then somewhere in there you gotta put the COA vote in.
Lots of things happening at the same time, yeah. Other questions in terms of the, just as sort of the status of where the budget is, and we can try to answer anything, so right now we have, in terms of the budget, we're, we have here the overview one, there's still 8,000 unbalanced, right, on our side?
Yeah, and I did send out the amount it would be for the non-union positions. So in total, if you were to do a 2% increase for non-union positions, it would be, we'd be negative 24,000. So we have 5,000 already built in for salary adjustments, which we can zero out or use towards that already, and then it wouldn't mean any, like, step or any changes based on job description change or anything like that, so it would really be 15,800 for a 2% increase, and then we're still in the negative at that 8,000, so it's a total of about 24,000 on our side.
That would be something that you would have wanted to do in July, so the beginning of fiscal year, but that's prior to doing any new job description review, right? So there still would be a job description exercise that has to happen, and adjustments based on that, in somehow, yeah.
And I would argue that nobody moves in steps until that exercise is done. It's the 2%, and hold where you are until we can finish the third phase of this, because that will then drive the fine-tuning number. And I also believe, right now, that the increase in vocational education is about $80,000.
Okay.
Well, just based on the number you put in there, right, so it's 80,000, that's four additional students, and we, I don't know the answer to this, but somebody should know the answer relatively quickly, are they increasing the cost year over year? Are they increasing the cost year over year? Because if they're holding, I haven't seen a public meeting about that and they have to publicly vote on it.
Oh, really?
So I think it's last year's number. I think it's 20,700 something. There's not a built-in inflation and they only really adjusted on a five-year basis.
I was, okay, anything with schools, I'm extra optimistic in double-digit increases this year after looking around the region, so.
Crystal or the director over there shouldn't be able to answer that one question because we know our current census. So even if we redid it 48 students times this current rate, right? Catch fall is there's a child over there, a special education risk would be higher. But they'll also, that will be noted, it is noted on our quarterly invoice because they fall below the line. But my point is, I think there's an $80,000 offer in there. Figure if Roland goes up by two, there's $40,000 there that could be reallocated to this program if that's where.
And you have that in the revenues, is that?
Expenses.
Expenses.
Under the Norris collective line.
And that would be the easiest way to solve it if that does go down, which hopefully we'll know in the next week by next Tuesday.
Yeah.
So I did reach out to Crystal and see if I can.
For the census?
Both, for if Desi did anything with tuition.
Yeah.
Or if any change with the census now that's closed, so I'm just waiting to hear back.
But right now, we budgeted based on last year's census in terms of number of kids.
Yeah, about a 12% increase.
Scott, can I ask a question about the spreadsheet? So the personnel request column for every department matches the personnel approved column?
Yeah.
Is everything that the department's requested been included?
No, unfortunately, I have to fix that next year. It's just a matter of all the formulas I used. I need to redo how I do it. So when, it doesn't pick up the request or separate the request versus the approved. So that's.
Because I'm looking at this, I'm like, I know that that's not true.
Right, yeah.
But it looks like we're just approving everything that's been asked for.
Once the final budget for next week is all set, I can go back and go in and actually do the requests and type it in where the formulas are.
Separate it out more clearly, yeah. That probably would be a good idea, because it does give the impression that we didn't scrub anything and we certainly scrubbed a lot. So I think that needs to be just clear for the general public when we put this up so that they understand that, you know, we have done our level of due diligence as best we can to get some of these things done. I mean, you know, cemetery for one, I mean, as I look at that, that definitely moved around. And I know you moved some of that to capital, right? Just to be clear on some of those things.
May I ask a question about the savings? In the ConCon, you explained that the agents' hours for tenure was reduced to three months in anticipation of a new title coming on for balance in the year. So I see the savings under ConCon salary. I didn't see a placeholder for the three-quarters of year position.
That I put under town administrator and I bring that up.
Thank you.
Bring that up.
Seems to be a lot under the town administrator. Going from 22,000 to 187,000.
I'll be, I can, I'll be happy to.
I mean.
How do we have the operational request at 2,200? Is that right?
Yeah, we don't have a lot of operational stuff, mostly office supplies and stuff like that. But, and it's still just an estimate based on where we come out. So I have a draft job description that we're going to be working on. Actually, not really draft, more like stealing. But there's quite a few positions around the region that are like this, where it encompasses conservation, planning, land use, all that stuff. So just as a placeholder, I put it as an H2. So it could be, depending on how it actually comes out, it could be up or down, so. But hopefully we'll have enough time between now and July 1st when we can start advertising for it.
Do you think, does it make any sense when we're looking at the budget overview sheet to go through the exercise for Hampshire Regional and Norris and break out the piece associated with wages? Because when you get to the bottom line of 22 million, the bottom line says we're spending 19 million on non-wages and 3.7 on wages.
I mean, I did have a separate budget spreadsheet for the school budget and I can do this as a traditional, just with the wages and everything as well. So this is just, I just put all those in costs.
Because I'm assuming the budget overview is a document that the public's going to see.
They're going to see everything.
Yeah, so again, you know, my eye goes straight to the bottom line when I look at it.
Yeah, I see what you mean. 3 million only for salaries and 19 million in operations.
Yeah. So like knowing that, you know, Norris is, for example, 7.9 there, at least 4 million of that is in wages.
Right.
Oh, yeah, so I can.
You know what I mean?
Right, yeah, I'm gonna, I can, yeah.
Just break that back out.
You'd have got insurance.
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
Although it's not the same point you're making, but.
Well, could maybe.
Insurance was heavily.
We took a hit this year, yeah, too. It's what, 20%, increase this year on insurance?
John, is your thought that you really want to drive the point? Or at least let the reader visually see that a lot of this is going to be headcount, right?
Yeah.
Could we?
Because then it's a question, because that number somewhat stays consistent over time. And it's, well, what are the operational things that are driving this? And that's when the special education discussion comes in and then the cutback in federal funds.
And when you present the override versus, you know, the alternative, can you actually, in addition to the financial amounts, show headcount with and without?
I believe we will have a summary of what the potential impact looks like.
It's a little hypothetical because you don't exactly.
Right.
Well.
Or maybe you do.
We can't publicly, so there's a list of names on it on what it's going to be. But until the override fails, we don't, you don't want to make that for a document known.
But back to your question, so with the Hampshire Regional and the 5.9 and the 7.9 for Norris, is to break out of that, how much is salary related?
Yeah, and through the detail of.
Much more clear. Is that complicated to do?
No, I could do that, I could just, yeah, I can add the actual line there.
Just make a subcategory or something.
Or you have to just split the number into the two columns?
Yeah.
Personnel and operational.
Yeah, once I get the final thing, I'm going to, I can go into the actual budget that I pull it from and be a little bit more detailed. I'll just transfer it from the, this sheet into there.
And how much, if you know, and I'm jumping ahead a little bit here somewhere because somewhere I saw it and it caught my eye. Of our town insurance, non-benefit insurance, but our workers have it out. How much of that is related to the oil tank?
The oil tank renewal?
Because that, are we dealing with that later?
We'll talk about it.
Yeah, well, you know what? We're going to talk about it at the Capitol meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, I do have the separated out renewal for this next year, so.
Was, our current year is like 28,000? Or am I just?
I think that's a little bit more than what it is.
Are you talking the heating system or the underground tank?
The underground tank because there's a request at the Capitol, and again, this is Thursday's conversation, to replace that. And it's like 100,000, 110,000. And in my mind, if we're paying $28,000 a year for insurance on the thing because it's leaking and it's going up every year.
Because it is leaking.
It's not leaking.
It's believed that it's past its useful life.
It is definitely past its useful life.
The asset liner is no longer certified.
We do have an inspector.
And the insurance carrier says you can't move it's not.
But it gets inspected, so at least for right now, we're saying it's functional, right? But, yeah.
Oh, it's only 6,700?
Thank you. That's how bad I remembered.
Oh, fuck.
That's not nothing.
We, it's not.
Well, I mean, we had to drop, really jump through this to get this.
100,000 dollar repair.
Yeah, right.
So those are, I'm not sure how much the inspection costs are. I think that's a few thousand dollars, I mean, to do that every year, so.
Probably, yeah, I imagine this. Yeah, but there's the tank and then there's still the heating system itself, right, so.
Yeah, totally.
Okay.
Yeah, this is where we store the diesel to keep the trucks running.
Right.
We don't have a 24/7 gas station within the jurisdiction of the town.
That's true. You could walk from the town line to the diesel pump.
We'd have to vote authorization for the trust to leave the boundaries, right?
And that's a slippery slope.
Okay, moving on. All right, so what do we need to do in terms of this budget, Scott? Are we, we need to vote something tonight on the budget part or?
Not for the final, so the final vote would be taken next week. If you want to do the 2% and the 8,000 that were still in the deficit, we have to think about where that might come from. The personnel costs are, there's no, there's no real additional hours in the personnel costs anywhere other than vacant positions, but we already reduced some of that for under highway. Other than that, all of our positions are filled except for the proposed new one and the highway.
So are you proposing that we leave the $55,000 in the highway department?
No, that's taking it out, just to get this number, we took it out.
Sure. I feel like negative 8,000 was the number we were looking at last week and it was still in there.
I think we kept, Brandon's got four positions, she was planning on filling two this year and two next year?
Let me double check. Yeah, it's taken out.
Okay.
We just won't have any snow next year.
So you have budgeted two positions for highway though, right?
Three and a half at this point.
Oh, three and a half, okay.
So I did a. Right here, half your position. So it's this number divided by half, roughly.
And we're in the middle of April, right? So I mean, we've got 10 weeks left to go in the year. Are you still feeling confident that we're going to have offers of employment as of July 1st for two of those positions?
I got another one in today, so we got.
No, that's when we're ready to make offers of employment for them to start on July 1st.
I, I think we will have a very good shot. I talked to Randall today about it to make sure that we don't lose the people that have applied so far, so not to wait.
Because purely they can start this year.
They could start tomorrow if they want, if they pass everything, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Right, there was still one in here.
It's a stronger argument if the positions are filled going into the vote.
Yeah.
But again, you're only talking two positions to be filled right now, right?
Right, yeah. Our goal is to get two for this fiscal year, then once they're trained, then two next fiscal year.
But you've got an extra one and a half in the budget for next year.
Right, so if you wait three months and hire both at the same time.
Yeah.
You'll have enough money.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
So the other, the other biggest areas of our budget are, really follow the operational costs. The information, DIT, that's pretty straightforward with, you know, the near map, the NOVA support, the things like that. That's pretty, most of the expenses there are contractual, maintenance is mostly contractual. Then we have obviously our paper goods and things like that that we need. But most of that's, you know, our heating system, alarm system. Accounting is the audit. Assessors, a lot of that is the consultant work and a few other software programs. Health department, you know, the majority of that is Charlie's position as a consultant. Building, you know, we reduce that and that's usually with the on-call or the standby electrical or plumbing inspectors. Cemeteries, we've reduced. Conservation, we could probably take a few thousand dollars out of there. But the problem is, I didn't actually add anything to the town administrator for the new position for any office supplies, so. It's really not that much. Finance committee, we reduced the reserve fund down to 5,000. Fire department has been level funded. Highway department's probably one of those where we could talk to, I could talk to Randall and, you know, we could probably shave a little bit out of there. Library, problem is with the formula grant and Johann is at the minimum. Police department? I'd have to talk to the chief. And then, you know, treasurer collector, a lot of that is to do with illegal expenses for bonding or tax title. Veterans agent is stuff that we get reimbursed for. And then debt is set in stone, employee benefits set in stone. And town line expenses, I mean, 140 of that is from our, my insurance.
On the debt, you have that book, Jen said she gave you a copy.
Oh, yeah, you want it?
Ideally in electronic format, but apparently it's bound or something. So if I could take, I could have somebody at the office.
I can just rip off the bounding and scan it in if you want, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, that would be great. And because one of my, I don't know the answer to this. And one of my questions would be is looking at debt, is there an opportunity? I mean, the ship probably already sailed, but did we miss an opportunity to refinance any of the debt? And the book will tell me that, it'll tell me what the rates are, whether there's anything like that or whether we should be going to the state house notes. And I know it's a half that we've been reluctant to do because we're not experienced with it. But a lot of other municipalities do it at 2% interest or 4%. So at least the exercise. I also think, my gut tells me we're beyond trying to find cuts on any department in here. So now I'm shifting more of, there's got to be a story to tell. And the answer is that I don't know is what was the percentage of health insurance increase? Was it eight, what was the percentage?
About 18% for our primary plan.
So that's a talking point. And our, what percentage of the employee benefits, 2.7, I'm guessing are retirement contributions in that group?
Oh, yeah.
Right, that's a mandated number that's going up every year.
For sure.
That when we're talking to why expenses are going up, health insurance, you know, we can only grow by two and a half. And that went up by whatever you said, 18%. And after you normalize that across the entire budget, that's more than a two and a half percent, right?
Yeah.
But the pension, you know, I actually read a really good Facebook post by Mira Garcia explaining Hoyok's issue with their pension obligations going up. I've got to imagine we have a similar story to tell. We've got to be fully funded by year X, whatever that is, we can build that into the talking points. And again, you know, I'm a believer that the two and a half, although it's going to be paid for the next couple of years, was never meant to be the all-in-all. It was to prevent the beach communities from doing 18 to 24% increases year after year, right? And that when expenses go up and they can be justified, again, it falls on the voters as to whether or not to approve it, but.
But even our retiree looks like it's an 18% increase here too, right? The group, group.
Yeah, group health, health, yeah, the contribution.
Retirement up there, sorry, 15.
15.6.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, because outside of schools, that is our.
Largest line of.
Yeah, even behind debt, right? Am I reading that right? Yeah. I mean, our debt on books is only 540,000, not over.
Yeah.
It's not even a million.
I mean, if our, if our health insurance was reasonable to a single digit, we really wouldn't be having a lot of these conversations.
18% is huge.
Yeah.
The GIC's not even that high. But again, looking at the whole picture, during COVID, they held, they held the rates flat. So they're catching up for it now and we're feeling the pinch.
There's also the question of the lost drugs too, I think that are adding to it.
And the insurance costs.
They are, and our insurance is currently with the Hampshire County of Governments, Hampshire Cod. GIC is available and as far, in addition to the private markets. And I can't be above with it, but the town needs to go through a process of the loss runs. And because right now, we're paying based on the experience of the entire membership of Hampshire. And our losses may be above that, they may be well below that. And if they have been for five years, we'd be wise to go look at something separate. And again, it's too late to do it now, but.
It's worth investigating anyway to see what's out there, what's possible.
I did request our.
The loss runs?
Yeah, so for the last 24 months, they're going to be giving that to us.
Did you think to ask specifically for the claims history? Okay.
Yeah, everything.
We did that at our work. We split off and that's because we have good experience worked out. We split off and that's because we had good experience worked out.
I mean, we do have to negotiate with the unions if we're, we can force into the GIC under provision and we have to do some cost sharing with them. We can also renegotiate, you know, percentages of contribution levels. We can talk about doing a buyout program. You know, that could shave a little bit off, you know, things like that. But like John says, it's time at this point. We don't, just don't have the time to do it.
Right. But I think for fiscal '26, it should be one of our priorities. Can we just go through the exercise and see what the end result would be?
And then just for those that are looking at the chart like me, why are we in the negatives on the bottom two there?
Oh, um, that was just a small amount number, I think maybe, I'm not sure why Jen, I'm not sure why it's negative, it's just going down about a thousand dollars on each.
The OPEB, that's the, isn't that the OPEB audit?
Yes, yeah, the study.
Yeah, we're not actually doing an OPEB contribution, right? We're just pay as you go.
We do that out of free cash.
But, but it's not, it's not even covering close, covering the liability.
But if it's an audit, does it belong in employee benefits?
That's the actuarial study or something, isn't that?
It was generally under the, I think it was under the treasurer's budget. So I put it under employee benefits, we could
Where do we carry the cost for the town audits? Because that's a, that's a bolt on to the town audit.
Accounting. Accounting.
I mean, it's not a change of outline.
Jim, we'll put an explanatory note under the label.
Yep.
OPEB parentheses audit or actuarial.
Yeah, I got it. Once the final, I'm going to have to go back and fill this all out, what it is.
All right, so you're saying we don't really need to take a vote on the budget tonight, but we will certainly on Tuesday, in case anything changes between now and then.
Well, this is all predicated on 2%, right?
No, this is not, so with the 2%, we were in the negative 24, 036, 24,000.
As compared to where it appears.
Negative eight. So you put aside 20, 20,000 more basically toward adjustments for staff salaries.
Finance meeting again?
Well, I was going to ask the same question. Do we have, we have to recommend or not recommend this? Are we meeting on Tuesday?
Are we doing a joint social meeting on Tuesday? Today's posting was for today's meeting.
There's a normal one for the 15th.
Okay, gotcha.
Was there? Okay.
Probably out of state, so we'll need a Zoom link. Also, we're on tax day.
Oh, I don't have to do tax day or I may do it by year end. So this is the 15th, I need to if you can help me with that, Scott, because I don't even know how to do that.
Oh, yeah, that's not a problem. I can get that done.
All right, so then
So that leads us to our big question.
Big question, right?
And that is the ballot questions this year. So Public Safety put forward a special town meeting a couple of weeks ago. A $3.2 million debt exclusion was approved. Now, the select board has to decide whether or not to proceed with putting it on the ballot. They have 90 days at a maximum or 35 days at a minimum to put it on the ballot. And the idea was to put it on the May 20th town meeting, or town election, to save us from having a special election so close. And then we also have the Norris School override. Everything would be due by April 15th. So whether or not we, that's the last time I'm going to have to actually give, give Lucy written notice that night to comply with Mass Law.
That we intend to have questions on the ballot.
And actually vote on the actual questions.
Back on the 3.2 million, the 35, no less than 35, no more than 90 day, right? So Thursday night or whenever we last met, we, there was a discussion about doing the all-inclusive question. But that would be beyond the 90 day. So in essence, if it doesn't go on, it just, it just kills it. And regardless, it has to go back to town meeting for the first vote.
In the fall?
Yeah.
And we start over?
I think, because we have Christine and we have Chief here, I think they are anxious because if you are going to move forward, they don't have a lot of time as chairs of the committee to get the education out.
Well, up until Thursday, we were, we were planning on moving forward. Right? Or were there secret conversations?
Moving forward in which way?
Up until Thursday, the plan was, that's when we first talked about not putting it up.
There was discussion on that, we didn't vote on it.
Correct.
Yeah, correct. That was the first idea came up.
Finding is the way.
Right, and we wanted Public Safety to have a chance to hear that too. So, I mean, they've worked really hard and gone back at least a couple of times now to the architects to get the cost down and footprint down and everything else. So, so if we're clear, this 3.2, we could put, okay, so the choices are, right? We could put the 3.2 million on as a debt exclusion because it's already gone through town meeting. And we could also do the override, which is a more permanent tax increase, right? We could do both of those on there. You could do only one of them on there, assuming that, I guess I'm not hearing that we're not going to approve an override on our end. I haven't quite heard that.
I'm in favor of the override.
I don't get the, I don't get the sense that anybody's feeling like we can.
We might not recommend it actually. So we could be going to a split vote on the finance. Which then gets reported.
Yeah, it would get recorded, yeah. So there is, I guess there is a choice. But I mean, assuming that, that there was that, then, you know, you could push off the 3.2 million until the fall. But what that does is mean that everything we did at town meeting starts all over again. So you've got to go, we would have a special town meeting and a special election anyway in the fall. That was part of the plan, but we were only going to go for the second half, the big, the big chunk, the construction part of Public Safety at that point in time. But the wisdom of trying to do both a debt exclusion and an override at this point in time is kind of the question mark. That's been pushed quite a bit right now. I mean, we're, we
Become part of these things?
Yeah, basically. We wanted to put that on in the fall as well. They can, they can do a little bit themselves with the, with the OPM and architectural drawing from the, from the estate, but the actual construction money, they'd have to be coming back to town. So we had talked about whether we would have two articles at the time, two articles in the fall, one for Public Safety, one for Senior Center, or combine them into one article and just say, here's, here's the plan, here's the construction for Zero College Highway. So we hadn't gotten very far with that at all yet.
When we had special town meeting, we did talk about, or somebody, somebody talked about the Senior Center building and what it was going to cost, wasn't that, and the handouts too. So it's not a secret anymore.
No, that was like 10, 10.9 million or something.
We had 13 on that.
Yeah, something like that. So, so that was, you know, I mean, relatively speaking, I mean, it's, you know, it's about half or whatever we were looking at for Public Safety.
You started off framing it, we could do A, or we could do B, or we could do A plus B. But if we didn't put forward the school override, that would have knock-on effects throughout the school systems. Is that true? Want to describe that?
We have
You were suggesting that we have an option to not forward the override for the school.
No, I'm not, I think unless KP Law has changed their opinion, I think it has to go before the voters, whether
That's what I understood, but I thought Chair Chris was outlining
Well, I wasn't sure where, where finance was sitting on this. They, I mean, you, it would go on the war, I suppose, anyway, but you, you put down whether you recommended or don't recommend.
We don't, we don't kill anything.
Right, yeah, right, yeah. No, I totally agree. I think this has got to go before the voters. I don't think we have the purview to, in my mind, I wouldn't feel comfortable, no matter what I feel personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable.
I wanted you to express.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry.
And I agree with that too, it's up to voters.
I totally agree, yeah.
Right, too, too big of an issue for, for elected people.
Exactly, no, I agree, yeah. So could I, since you and Chris are here, you want to just throw in some thoughts about Public Safety and just thinking about, you know, do we want to try and put this on in the, in the spring? Or do we want to just wait until the fall and just go for the whole thing? And so that would be then not just the 3.2 million, but it would be putting the whole, the whole package together, which was, we were what, 27, 28, something like that, right?
Regardless, the second vote will happen in our next election, the next. Where we're discussing, do we defer and do it all in one vote? That's option two, I'll say. Right, option one is let the 3.2 go forward, but in that next vote, the second piece of that is going to go forward regardless.
In the fall?
Yeah.
Yes.
Where we would defer everything to, right now, if we defer.
Right, exactly, yes. Yeah, yeah. But.
So it has been mentioned that if we go ahead, if it's on this ballot, there is the chance that in addition to the override, or there's more likelihood that it will not be voted in favor of because of the override. Maybe, maybe not.
It's a risk, for sure.
More of a risk. So what is, so the question then is, is it worth the risk? Because we're going to have to go back. Anyway, what's the difference? What, what would be the downside of just asking for all of it in the fall? I'm not quite clear on how that would, what disadvantage there might be to doing that.
Can I say something to exactly on this committee as well? It seems like the Public Safety Service, Safety Building is moving forward. The hard moving forward was to go to a special town meeting, get that vote. And then if we start changing it around, it looks funny. It looks like, oh, you're, you're trying to time and game it? And that's, I mean, that's kind of what we're doing.
I think the unknown was just the, the 897,000 override was not known.
Yeah, it was, yeah. But they really should stand on their own. I mean, the voters know that all this stuff is out there.
They do. And unfortunately, I think right now people don't know that we're even talking about the option of maybe putting the 3.2 million later on. You know, they're, they're assuming, mid voters, I think are assuming that we're doing both right now, yeah, that they'll both be on the ballot. I think that's kind of the general whispering around town that I've heard.
And as I expressed on Thursday, to me, the way we worded the vote at special town meeting for Public Safety building, 3.2 million dollar debt exclusion, this is just a test of the limits. Because even if it passes, you can't borrow a dime until you get that next vote. It's sending a signal that is a majority of the town in favor of this, because it only went 60, 40 at town meeting, but again, small population, 120 people. But that's where you get the risk. And then some will argue that you're only going to get one shot at the apple. You know, I don't necessarily know that's true, but I mean, I think it means that we have to go back. I personally think there is, there is, prior to the Norris issue coming up, I think there is a, I think the Public Safety complex has the strongest chance of support throughout the entire community. You know, it touches everybody regardless of where you are, just as it did with the fire department to get the ambulance going. When you get into the school versus the council on aging versus debt, capital overrides for highway garage trucks, that's where you now, where you're narrowing down your audience but could enough education be done to say this is just, if you like what you're giving so far, we're not going to borrow the money because we can't.
Well, and I think that was part of the issue that, you know, we, we were trying to figure out, we didn't, when we got the figures, I think the final figures, relatively final figures on the cost of the construction for the, for the Public Safety building, we got it very, very, very near to town meeting, to special town meeting. So there was no time to really do a massive educational campaign to say, hey, look, we're coming at you for, you know, 28,000, 28 billion dollars. So the 3.2 million was a little bit of a test of the waters right then, just to see how that was. And that went well, I think it was 120 to 25 or something like that. But again, we know that more people come out for an election than probably attended the town, special town meeting. So, you know, but again, Scott, I think you made the point very clearly that we're not going to be able, and John just reiterated that, we're not going to be able to borrow anything anyway, and that's not the intent to borrow, until we have the whole package in front of us. And so this will be borrowed sometime in early '26, if all goes well, and, you know, hit the taxes sometime later in '26. But, or '27 maybe, fiscal '27, yeah. So the question is, you know, are we, are we, what are we risking by not doing it now? You can still proceed with paperwork, right? All that we've got to do to get the architectural study, RFP and all that kind of stuff ready. So in that regard, it doesn't waste any time, I guess.
The question that I raised, on your question, is that if we deferred the 3.2 vote, could Scott still go forward and prepare the RFPs and whatever? And the answer is yes. But in hearing this discussion tonight, I'll chime in, and I think we stayed the course swallow hard that we have the school override, but go forward with 3.2. And if there is a silver lining, we know everyone's confused about 2.5 overrides. And we have one each flavor and we can educate how they are different. We have to in each case, but people are so damn confused that maybe in the land side by the side, people understand the difference.
I, I agree. I don't think by moving the 3.2 to the fall that you're, it's not like we're folding anybody, like they know it's there. If the 3.2 doesn't pass, then is everything else?
I guess that's the question. What do we do if it doesn't, if it doesn't pass at the ballot?
I think it's, if, if it does pass, there's obviously a good upside going into the next vote. If it doesn't pass, I think there's a much greater negative view on the next vote in the fall for that. So I think there's more to be lost than there is to be gained by a vote.
So the, if the 3.2 doesn't, if we put it on the ballot now, it doesn't pass now, then the vote in the fall would be for the total?
Yeah.
But my concern would be
We're voting on 3.2 twice.
You'd have to get another
This would kind of, yeah, well, we would, we'd have to go to another special, yeah, another special town meeting, start all over. Yeah, but then present the entire package, not just the 3.2, yeah.
Yeah, but it's all the same program.
We're going to If the 3.2 doesn't hold up, you're most likely not going to pass the whole package, right? At least it gives you some free polling and you get a chance to have an educational effort. So I don't see a real negative, right? I think if it doesn't pass now, you are going to have a really hard time getting it through in the fall for the full amount.
Yeah, but there is a faction out there that says, don't jerk us around with 3.2 when the real number is third, whatever the number is. At least, you know, I did hear some of that, whether that's a meaningful number of voters.
I guess I'd say we've already done it. I mean, that's, what's done is done. We did that, so, but I, and so I think we should
I heard a part about poisoning the well or whatever metaphor it be is.
I think if we change it though, it's kind of like blood in the water. Everyone's going to say, oh, this project is on really shaky ground, you know, it's probably not going to make it through.
It does sound like that.
Just to put it out there, could putting the 3.2 million on the ballot hurt the override?
Again, the voters have to decide. I mean, I'm, I think if it stays on, the education piece goes through, that this is, this is just a, you know, we're looking for a smoke signal if this total project is going to be supported. And I would also argue, the taxpayers are not going to feel the impact of the Public Safety building until fiscal year '28, '29, maybe even '30, because there's no treasurer in the world that's on day one is going to borrow the full project amount. They're going to do bands and it's going to be as costs are incurred and she has to close up the books. We have enough cash flow to get it. That the full impact will be, I'm assuming this is a 16-month build project, right? So you're spanning years. You know, again, this gets into some of the, some of the other areas now. How, at, how much in reality are we able to say, okay, we know this is coming, just like the bridge, the million-dollar bridge, right, that we voted on and then it took four and a half years to get the tax rolls? Right, but that's an example we can point to. Where are there ways that we can reduce in the meantime? Let's pray to God we can find a windfall on the insurance, right? And now we're getting these negatives then prior to the override actually heading. So it's all part of the kick now, the debt exclusion, I should say. The override would be instantaneous.
I mean, if I'm a voter, I don't want to be manipulated. I want to know what's, what's coming up and I want to vote on it. I want it all in front of me. We were talking about this with the Senior Center building. I didn't want to group them together because I didn't think that was really honest. I don't want to be able to vote with these people, yeah. And so, you know, for me as a voter, if there's a school override, then there's got to be school override if we want to move forward with Public Safety building.
And if this were to go on the ballot and the 3.2 didn't, didn't pass at the ballot, then we've got a huge amount of education to do during the summertime to prepare for the fall. I mean, I don't think the project is dead per se, but it's just a higher hill to climb, to overcome and re-argue the whole thing.
You're overcoming negatives at that point.
Yeah, the higher hill.
However, in the case, you've got to build the support However, in the case, you've got to build the support for the full bill and special town meeting and election in the fall. I don't think we should think it's a cake block if the 3.2 passed.
No.
Agreed.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I'm a little concerned for momentum. We had people coming in with numbers to vote at town meeting. And there would have to be some widespread explanation made available to the town, and that seems complicated. So that worries me a little bit.
If it were not on the ballot?
If it was not to go on the ballot, yes. Those are the two things. We have the momentum going by having those people use their time to come out and support it. And I do worry a little bit about it not going on, having to make an excuse or explain why it's being deferred.
How much latitude... This is a town budget, a town question, not a state question. How much latitude do we have on the two paragraphs?
Yeah.
On what the question is?
But let me ask you, before we get into the language...
I can say this, you know, I believe the override at the town election, at the town meeting will pass. Because I think the school have a lot of... They have people there, like has in the past. And, you know, usually with that question, in the previous override, there were a lot of people there. So I do believe that it passed then. I don't know what's going to happen when it comes to ballots for either one of them, to be quite honest, based on the fact that it'll be on the state ballot.
But then there's also a huge difference. If you're in an auditorium, you have to raise your hand and keep your hand up for 10 minutes for the town. That's one thing versus the secrecy of the ballot box. Because you could support something that... I mean, I'll support anything at the town meeting without a ballot. And then the ballot...
The ballot's... Because I can't, you know... My thought process is have them go through. Keep the 3.2.
Keep it going.
When is the override going to town meeting?
Afterwards.
No.
Right?
No. May 6th, two weeks before.
So that's a second special town meeting just for that? No, no, no. Annual.
It's on... It would be, in addition to elective officers, we'd have that on there as well.
Right, right. So I'm confused. There doesn't need to be the 35 days between...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's why April 15th, we have to vote to put it on. If it fails at the town meeting, it can be pulled.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we've got the town meeting on 6th and the election on the 20th. So there's just two weeks in between those two. So we'd have it on the warrant for the town meeting.
And can you vote absentee in the...
No.
At the ballot test?
At the ballot.
Oh, ballot. Yeah, I don't know how...
It's like for the rest of the side, if they want to do mail-in?
Yeah. Lucy Buxton was usually about mail-ins and all that kind of stuff. We'd have to check.
We've gotten... Since we've moved here, we've gotten mail-ins for everything. That's actually pretty sweet.
I think sometimes for local elections, she comes and asks us whether... Because it's an expense, I mean, for local elections.
Yeah, I talked to her.
Early voting. As I recall, that's what she asked for, because that's...
Maybe it is. Maybe it's early voting. It could be that, rather than that.
For municipal, for mail-in ballots, it's like we're asked to approve it.
Yeah. Anyway, we can... We'll get to that point, but...
But just to your... An absentee ballot, you can come into the town clerk's office next number of weeks prior and fill your absentee ballot and head it there.
I didn't know that would be municipal, only state and federal have done routine yet.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I think, let's take a look at some ideas. So the language that we had used, or which you handed out to us, is the... A sample from '24. So this is when we did the override, basically for the extra fire department costs. There's one police thing in here, but basically fire department was the focus of this. So just to recap, I think, and correctly if I'm wrong, but a couple... Two or three years before that, we did one override that had little bits from every department, and it was like, it wasn't that big a dollar figure, if I recall, but it had a lot of bits from every department. Did not fail. I mean, it did not pass. Did not pass. Prior to that, and I think Lucy told us last week...
'17?
'17, there was the override for the school.
For 110,000.
110,000 or something. But I think she said that did not pass, is that right?
I remember it passing, but I didn't...
It passed at the town meeting, I know that.
Yeah, but I think it might not have passed at the ballot. So I guess I don't know when the last... It'd be good to know when the last override for Norris happened, and when it... If it passed, when it passed. You know, that would be just good information to have in the back of our pockets on that one. But I thought she had mentioned that it did not pass in '17 at the ballot. But I could be wrong. But just to say that we usually have... I think we figured out now that we need one issue overrides. We don't need all these combination overrides, because that is just very confusing for voters. So focusing on the fire department, like this one here, was very clear to people, I think. And that is probably what we ought to think about this time around. But go ahead, Scott. Turn me over.
So with the... You know, town meeting with the override presentation, there's a couple different ways that you can do it. In the DLS, they recommend a few different approaches. The first one would be a single motion with both contingent and non-contingent amounts. So you would see here what the actual budget would be under one article, one motion. That's one way to do it.
It's for the override?
For the override.
So this is a town meeting. And then if that was to pass, it goes to the ballot. And if the override ballot passes, that budget A comes in. If it fails, budget B comes in.
Right, exactly.
So it's one vote at the town meeting.
Exactly. The second one is you have one article, and you have separate motions, one for contingent budget, which is the four... No. Those little... One with and one without the override. So you would actually have one article with two motions. So that's another way to do it. The other way is...
Article and motion.
Where you would have... Skip here. Separate departmental contingent budget articles. You would still have one article... The first article has your regular basic budget. And then your contingent article would be a separate article for the override amount.
Just for that.
And then there's some other options, where there's tiering, and there's menu options, but that's all just...
So I like the first one, if the goal is to get it to the ballot box to let the broadest group vote it.
I mean, what we've done in the past for this one is two separate questions and two separate motions. So that was... That wasn't there, was it? Or is that number two?
Um...
Separate motions.
That'd be number two.
That'd be number two, I guess, yeah.
Because number one's one vote with both in it.
Right.
So then it just...
So this was separate motion, so this was...
I might be listening to that.
Yeah.
Yep, this would be the third option. Separate article for supplemental. So Article 6 was the annual operating budget, and then Article 7 was the additional override amount.
Right, okay. That was just that amount. So that's what we've done in the past that's worked at least once recently. Go back to that first one again, just to describe the...
You would have essentially one article, one motion, and then in that motion, you would describe the contingent and non-contingent appropriations. And it would be based on passage of Prop 2 and a half.
So the... What was it? I can't remember the number, 879?
Yep.
Is it... That would be where the 300,000 is, basically?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
And then when we... When we do this at town meeting, doesn't Robert break these out per category?
You're on the budget now. Well, yeah, the total, which...
Yeah. We vote on each category. We vote on, let's say, we vote on education.
Because that's how we list it. And again, with this new budget format that we're doing, you know...
I think it would be presented separately. So we would talk about each department individually and go over it. And then essentially, it'd still be one vote, though, for the entire budget.
But the way he does it, he does... Takes all the votes in sections. And if you get to the end and all the sections pass, then there is no vote on the total budget, because you already did in sub-sections.
What if something failed, though? Would that be... Wouldn't we need individual motions for each separate budget, then?
We have in the past.
Well, in the past, we've done it separately, right?
Because I think we recommended each... Last year, didn't we recommend each line by department? Do you recall?
I mean, I...
I mean, that sounds really messy to me as somebody new. It sounds like...
Well, you can only amend it in written form. You have to have it written form on the spot. It can't be typed, it has to be written.
No, it feels like we've... I should watch this, but it feels like we've done, you know, read the article for the entire budget, and we've got that out there, so I can move on it. But then he breaks it up at his prerogative, and we vote on each section of that.
We shouldn't be able to do that.
But again, I say it's because... Well, it's because how we list it. We give them all the detail.
Right.
Versus, there was discussion on doing summary by department versus, you know, the public safety. So if we... Even this summary that's here, change it for our subcategories and print all the... If he wants to go line by line, he can. But again, what is the intent, or what is the desired outcome? For me, just me, my desired outcome is not for this to be decided at town meeting. It's to get to the ballot.
Right.
And then let it be decided. So that's why I like this one. It's one vote, both of them are there, it goes to the ballot. Hopefully it passes, because if it fails, we're going to... Someone's writing some amendments. Because we can't adjourn the meeting without a budget passed.
Right, we'd have to have a special town meeting and a special election if we missed it, yeah.
Right.
That would be very messy.
Do we vote on the left-hand column before you vote on the right-hand column, or not?
Under this...
It's just a single vote.
Option two. Option one is it's one vote. Option two breaks them into the separate at town meeting.
It's basically punting it to the voters.
Which, again, from my spot on the slide board, that's who I think needs to decide the question.
And so if this motion were to fail at town meeting...
There is no budget.
Is there any way on the spot to vote the left-hand column?
Well, that's number two. I mean, I actually prefer to do number two.
That's a a priori structural choice, rather than in the moment if the omnibus were to fail.
Right, if this were...
It would be terrible to walk out of town meeting with no municipal budget.
Yeah, if this were to potentially fail, if it looks like it's going to fail, you'd have to amend it, because we wouldn't have any other articles later on in the budget.
There would be no articles to pull back on, like what we've done in the past.
Right, you'd have to amend this.
If you had two copies handwritten that said, we want to now move to voting just left-hand column, is that out of order?
We could ask the moderator to postpone the vote to the last, and I can run the town hall and type it up really quick. Essentially, is deleting the contingent part and just doing the...
But is the second or third option that only had the contingent budget on it another...
Oh, yeah.
Wasn't there one that had the full budget and then just the contingent piece?
I think that was number two.
Was it number two or three there?
Yeah, number two is separate motions. That's each budget, side by side.
Which is what we've done, yeah, usually.
Oh, this would be number three. This would be the...
Call you out for a school.
Oh, I'm sorry, just for the school department.
So number three, there are two votes. The first vote, if it's yes, then you've got a budget.
Right.
Second vote is for the extra money. You either get it or you don't.
Yep.
Yeah.
But again, that's potentially killing it at town meeting.
Does that make it too easy to say no, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. Because you're only getting maybe 100, 120 people to vote on it versus the 3,000 eligible voters. Whether they show up to the polls is another story.
But what do you see on the ballot, then? Do you see it... Do you see the override? Just the override on the ballot separately?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, because at the ballot, it would have to be separated. Do you support the override? No, do you support the override? If you do, this passes. If you don't, here's the contingent budget that comes into play, or the non-contingent, whatever you're calling it.
I can't...
I just want to... Yes, I was trying to clarify that. So option one, I don't know why you wouldn't vote for that, because it's either you're voting for both budgets, essentially, right? Just kicking it to the ballot for the override. At the ballot, if the override fails, you already have your contingent budget there.
Yes vote passes the override, a no vote prints the lesser.
Right. So if you do option two and you split those up, there's a potential of killing the ballot of the override going to the ballot at all, and only approving the contingent at town meeting.
Correct. But just say both of those pass at town meeting separately, only the override question is going to the ballot.
Right.
Well, that seems... As a voter, that seems more fair to me to be able to vote in two votes, rather than be kind of guided to a group vote. You know what I mean? I mean, I don't think we should be deciding what has the better chance of approval. I think we should be deciding how to present it to the voters and what to make the decision. Both at town meeting and at the ballot box. Because there might be people at town meeting that don't want to do it. They'll say, well, how do we not do it? And you've got Scott running to the town hall trying to type something out.
But I think you're giving the option... You're giving the override option to the 200 that show up at town meeting versus the however many voters.
That's always true. That's a town meeting from the government. There are two bites of the apple, both positive and negative.
I don't disagree, but if DOR is recommending... If option one is a recommendation from the DOR, that means communities do that, take that approach.
For whatever reason, I mean, for the reasons that we're discussing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is the format, right? But it also leaves a lot of individuals out who are unable to make the town meetings. But that's a continual complaint.
And the flip... Not the flip side, but I guess my other counterargument is, is there is a significant portion of our society, of our community, that believes once it passed at town meeting, it automatically became a tax. I mean, you've seen it on the 3.2. They believe it's already done. They're not even aware there needs to be a ballot vote on this. And those were the ones speaking out against it passing anyways.
Yeah. That's kind of a weakness of our town government, I don't know if they don't know that. Maybe they should know that themselves, but...
So procedurally, Scott, do each of these paths forward require the same quotient quote?
Percentage.
A vote, percent vote, a simple majority or two-thirds?
A simple majority at the ballot box, and I believe it's two-thirds at the town meeting.
Two-thirds at town meeting. Include the basic cooperating.
This was a simple majority.
Oh.
I thought it was two-thirds.
Assuming we did it correctly that day.
That's what we did for the... It was two-thirds.
Oh, I'm sorry, borrowing is two-thirds. So, yeah, so the override would be simple majority.
The whole price.
That excuse, yeah.
We don't need to bar for it because we're going to tax for it.
Because this was a...
Isn't that a debt? We're not issuing bonds. That would be a three-fourths majority.
Yes.
Well, isn't it more likely a blocking strategy that there'll be a lot of supporters for the override at the town meeting from outside of vote camps that come out and force?
Yeah. So am I hearing that everybody's kind of leaning to this option a bit? Or not?
Reggie and I are an option.
Yeah, I guess you two are. So we have this...
For the right reasons.
So what don't we like?
You don't technically have to decide until the warrant is closed for this part, but you need the ballot language. You definitely have to approve by the 15th.
Okay, so do you have some ballot language, or is maybe that's where we should focus on and then come back around?
So this is what it'll look like.
So this is where you're beginning?
And then the educational piece is a yes vote means this and a no vote means...
There's more detail.
Yeah. That gets added to the ballot.
But this would be on the ballot, there's no...
I think there's the...
There was no explanation, no, no.
Did we not provide it?
We provided a handout last year for this one. We provided a handout saying a yes means this and on the backside a no means this.
During the ballot process or just at the meeting?
It was available at the polls outside the door or somewhere.
But generally, again, this might be because it's a state question. This is not a state question, it's a town question. But on the state questions, right, when we get question one, whatever that was, one of them was the elimination of MCAS, right? It gives the vote, and then the summary. A yes vote means this and a no vote means that. Are we able to do that on a town ballot?
I kind of feel like a couple things I've gotten have that on. They haven't had that on there.
I don't think so for town.
Yeah, I don't think we can say this will prevent the layoff of 10 teachers.
No. No, I mean, that's why all we did for this one, I'm pretty sure, was a one-page handout that was available...
I don't disagree with you, Chris. But knowing that we are, I just want to know if it's because we've always done it that way or we're legally restricted.
Well, okay, I don't know.
Because I suspect if the town could do it, we have to send the draft language down to Galvin, and he has to bless off and worry.
The town... Bring up the language. So the town can't say what a yes or a no would mean under OCPF. It's a political finance.
How does the state do with that?
Well, there's a special exemption for like... There's a special exemption for like charters, charter reviews, and for state questions.
Maybe that's what I remember seeing, on the state questions.
Could be on that, yeah.
There's a side of our T L S.
Yes, right. From the state, correct. But not for towns. I've never seen it anyway. But you're right. I mean, sometimes we fall into this, well, we've always done it that way, so let's keep doing it. It doesn't hurt to stop and take a quick research and be sure that we need it.
It does seem a little harsh that the state can do it, but for municipal issues... Your guess is good, mine...
Well, it's the same with open meeting law, too.
Yeah.
And you know, the more I think about this, I'm wondering, generally, the state questions are not sent to us by the state. They're citizens' petitions, right? That get onto the questions. And then the authors have the ability to write a supporting comment or... Or, again, they look for somebody to do it, yeah.
Yeah, the magical booklet we get. Yep, exactly.
Here we are. Municipal ballot question. Nope, that's not it.
Here's my reading, Scott. So here it says, "Moreover, local officials cannot use the question to provide voters with information on the underlying events or circumstances, for example, preventing the layoff of four firefighters." And then, let me paraphrase here. "Other examples of purposes in override questions that include advocacy language or would be otherwise inappropriate because they do not state spending purposes are as follows: Restoring monies lost due to local aid reductions, funding uncontrollable increases in employee health insurance costs, preventing substantial reductions in public safety, education, or other..."
Can't be on the ballot.
Cannot be.
But there can be an education component to it outside the ballot.
Seems like you want to do that beforehand anyway.
Okay. So back on the question part?
Did we come to a conclusion on whether to move forward with the public safety building?
No, that was actually the sample language I wanted to see.
Yeah, I wanted to see what that sample language was. Do you have the ballot question for the public safety or not?
It would be the same as... Let me bring it up. It would be the same as last year's land purchase.
So while you're doing that, I went back and looked at the annual town meeting warrant, and we actually did not split it up by department. It was the overall budget, and then it was the water department, you know, the enterprise funds.
Right.
Correct, but when Robert goes down, he's like, whatever the first, like, general government. Any objections to that? Do you want to speak in favor or against?
Yeah.
And then we vote on that piece.
We only have it in the article that way, but he orally, if we go back and look at a meeting, I bet, I'm pretty sure he goes by departments. So here we are, we're going to take a vote on general government. Is everybody okay for 2 million five on general government?
And if you get down to the end...
Then public safety, then education.
You never vote on the total.
Do you instruct him to do it properly? Because that's imprecise. If there's only one vote, he can't split it up and ask for questions.
Yeah, that's what he normally does, just divide the...
Rather than having 20 departments or however many budget categories each file in, do a presentation, you could go boom, 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 hold, and then circle back for more discussion, presentation just on that department. But you're moving, moving, moving to one vote on the budget.
I mean, he's making people think they can zero out the police department or something. And they can't, because that's not the question that's going to put to them.
Right.
It's not the warrant. I think the question for a department is okay, but...
This is the question that was on the ballot?
This is from the College Highway. It's going to be similar to this, outside of the land, but it'd be...
For net exclusion.
Yeah, so I didn't have the...
It would not have the summary paragraph that's right underneath it.
For... Oh, I'm sorry, you're looking for the question.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I think there might be, yeah.
But I'm guessing it's probably going to follow the same pattern.
Let me...
Yeah.
I do have that.
We would have voted on that at the warrant, at the election, for the purchasing the land.
Yeah.
Remember that question? No, I'd have to go back and think about how Robert divides the question, but I think usually when you present like a $20 million budget, people are like, "Oh, we don't really understand what that all is." So then I think he's just taking it by the five or six departments. So, no, but I mean, he just says, you know, here's the five or six departments, and this is what he wants.
We're not taking votes on each section.
You're just asking questions.
You're right.
Have to go back and watch the tape from last time. Okay, make that a little clearer?
Find the break where the land, yeah.
There we go. So, something about pay in order to... So that would be similar, then, the language for the... And in the question, the actual amount, the 3.2 million, does not appear in the question, right? Or does it?
I think it does.
For this one, it was, you can't put it in there. For the override, you can.
No, I know.
Right, but we're now on the public safety at 3.2.
For public safety, can we put in 3.2 million? Or is it silent in terms of the amount?
The question for the public safety would be silent. I'm very... I'll double-check with Michelle.
And the paragraph above it is talking about that question, right?
Yeah, this was the article for town meeting.
Which would not be on the ballot.
Which would not be on the ballot, right.
It seems to me the question should have the amount in there. Is that how you know?
So that was the actual... That was the actual question on the ballot, this one?
Yep, that's from KP Law. So there is an issue with borrowing, so the state provides borrowing amounts to be put on there.
Which doesn't make any sense. I mean, as long as you... To me, if you print the words "not to exceed 3.2 million", that's what you're actually voting on. There, you're voting on what? Something that was ratified at a town meeting?
She's talking about finding property.
Yeah, no, it didn't make sense to me, and I talked to Michelle about that because that didn't make sense for the land use. So I'll double-check for the... I mean, because they're essentially doing services, not purchasing land.
Right.
Or equipment, so it might be different for services. So I'll have to look into that.
All right, so let's circle back and see. We know we could have potentially two questions, I guess, on the ballot. We need to make a decision about which way we're going to go. So do we have a motion to...
By the 15th.
Yeah, by the 15th. Do we want... I was going to say, do we have a motion tonight? Or do we want to wait until the 15th to figure out whether we want both questions on the ballot or one question? Or are we kind of at that moment tonight? That we do the override?
Can I ask a question? Just to clarify. Which way are you guys leaning? Or are you divided?
I don't think so.
No, I think we're...
I think we want to move forward. But I'm no expert, you know? It's just, for my part, Chief May have more knowledge than me. It's really a gut feeling that we need to keep moving forward with this project.
I think if there's education that is able to be done that can be reiterated, because I'm sure, depends how much latitude Robert gives us, at town meeting, when the vote comes up for the override, there's going to be questions about, "Well, we just did this. How does this impact?" And that would be an opportunity for somebody to speak and to clarify that this is just absolutely no borrowing. If this passes, there absolutely no borrowing can happen until an additional vote for the entire project. This is just, voting yes on this at the ballot is just saying we want to move forward with the project without committing any additional money to it until we can vote on the full project. And I think if that's the messaging, who's not going to support it? I mean, the support on the ballot for 3.2 doesn't commit them to higher taxes.
I think it'll just complement it, too. If you take it off and then we put it on together with the overall construction, people are going to be like, "I don't... It's going to confuse people."
Right.
And there's already been, there's already a lot of people...
So stay the course.
Why'd you take it off in the first place?
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, it's okay.
But there will be the question of if you're not going to spend the money now anyway, why are we voting? I think that will be asked by some.
Yeah, although it's just, we're just going to the ballot now, so there's really no more public discussion about it. It's just going to be on the ballot, right? Will it be discussed at the meeting again?
Only if they bring it up as a question. As a question related to the override. How... And I'm not saying what, but to me, that's where I see it. How does this impact the vote we already took?
And will Robert even allow that?
He might not, because it didn't allow any discussion.
But if somebody jumps up quick enough to answer it.
I had to sneak in the senior center. I had to sneak in the senior center when I spoke.
Yeah. Okay. So do we want to take a vote tonight? I just note that we would put both of these questions on the ballot?
I'm in favor of staying the course.
So just, you do have to actually read the actual ballot question when you vote on it?
Oh, okay. So we can't vote on it tonight? Because you don't have the same ballot?
Right, but if you...
Okay.
I'll have both ready for the 15th.
So we're taking straw poll.
Straw poll tonight.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, there we go. All right, well, it took us a while. Okay. So straw poll tonight? All those in favor putting both questions on the ballot?
Under discussion. Because it's our vote.
Right.
Does the opinions agree with this approach collectively? Moving forward?
Yeah, okay.
I'm good.
Okay. Okay. So let's move forward. We're getting specific language then that would be actually the ballot language for both, and we'll have it for next Tuesday.
Yep.
Sounds like a plan, I think.
Well, what about the town meeting part? We dance around that one pretty well.
That one, you have a few more days after the 15th when you decide on more, which way you want to do it.
Yeah.
I would say you draft up all three options so that we can look at it and then we can...
Let me just check my legal budget again, because this is going to Michelle.
I think it was Model 1 and Model 3.
Yeah. Yeah, whatever, the way we've kind of been doing it and then new models for the two choices.
I don't know how we do it.
Yeah, whichever, one or two. So...